In the past year, we've had approximately 800 complaints citywide encompassing everything from sightings to pet attacks to just anything that you might find a coyote doing. The coyote policy of the city of Los Angeles is basically to do what we can to discourage coyote forays into our neighborhoods and try to live with the coyotes rather than against them.
Coyotes are most abundant in and around the foothills and on large tracts of open land. The coyotes of Los Angeles have taken to using the aqueducts as their own private superhighway, making it possible for them to hunt over a vast area of land. Coyotes are nocturnal, basically sleeping during the day and doing most of their hunting in the early evening, night, and early morning. But coyotes are opportunistic hunters. They will change their habits to suit their needs.
Many complaints we receive are coyotes roaming in neighborhoods, maybe one o'clock in the afternoon. It's a very common thing to hear complaints about the animals being taken during the day.
Coyotes in the wild have a wide variety of eating habits that consist of small mammals, insects, reptiles, birds and eggs, fruits and berries, and even deer. In the city suburbs, a coyote menu of edible items increases dramatically such as rodents or small mammals that hide in unkept overgrown lawns and gardens, as well as fallen fruit. And, small pets such as cats and dogs can also fall prey to coyotes. Also, human garbage including plastic, eggshells, cloth, and any other edible remains. The coyote has easily adjusted his eating habits to what is available in our communities. For this reason, he is a difficult predator to deal with.
The coyote problem is a neighborhood problem, it's an individual problem, and to some extent it is a municipal problem. You as the individual notice when you begin to have coyote problems. You may or may not be aware of people around you, what type of issues they're having, but it's only through a neighborhood effort ultimately that you will be able to discourage a lot of the coyote forays into your neighborhood. Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, Tori Bosley.
Hi.
Hi. If you begin to notice problems with coyotes or wildlife, it is absolutely essential that you take steps early to begin to resolve these issues.
So, down here is where the attack took place.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where. I could hear it, but I couldn't see it.
Alright.
And so, I panicked and I started screaming for this dog. Zora, Zora, Zora! And, you know, she wasn't coming up. And then, finally, I saw her sort of staggering up the hill.
The barking of a small pet will often attract a coyote, and when the coyote is hungry, it might go to extreme lengths, even attacking and stealing your pet right before your very eyes.
So, I came out here and all of a sudden I heard a rustling of my bougainvillea bush. Zuzu then went to get her chew stick and literally something just brushed past me, grabbed Zuzu, and just, literally took just three steps over the wall, across the street, and I just went running across the street and, you know, dug myself up on that hill and right under there. I just thought somehow I could get her and I heard her stop screaming.
Once a coyote has staked out your home, you have to be forever vigilant to protect your pets.
My three dogs were on the front porch. My little other dog that was attacked was sitting on the fountain, and I came right over here and rolled up the hose. And, I was walking up and my three dogs were still on the front porch, and Bogie instead of being on the fountain was laying right here in the driveway. And so, in the amount of time it took me to will the hose in, a coyote must have taken my dog from the fountain and attacked him that quick and run off because I guess he saw that I was right there.
In the Santa Monica Mountains, Dr. Seth Riley listens for the audio signals transmitted from a collar worn by a coyote in the wild. With this information, he can determine the coyote's daily routine and its interaction with people. Dr. Riley hopes that this study will lead to a better understanding of coyotes and a humane and successful approach to living with them. While this study and an attempt to understand coyotes is new, coyotes themselves have been around for a long time.
Coyotes actually originated right here in North America. They are pretty old species, one to two million years old. And, they, many other species sort of came over to North America or to the Americas from the Old World like wolves for example, but coyotes are North American original.
Serious coyote eradication began in the mid-19th century when ranchers started raising livestock on the American prairies. At the turn of the century, wool growers joined the ranchers in their attempt to eliminate the pest. Between 1915 and 1947, almost 2 million coyotes were destroyed. This massive effort at eradication was implemented to its fullest extent in Klamath County, Oregon. By 1947, there was not a single coyote left in the whole county, but there were field mice without coyotes to prey on them. Without natural control, the rodent population exploded. The cost and lost crops soared into the millions of dollars, far more damage than had ever been caused by coyotes. In the end, Klamath County, Oregon had to reintroduce the coyote into the area to maintain ecological balance.
Coyotes can have a big impact on other species. They definitely eat, like I said, they definitely eat small mammals and rabbits, and they can have impacts on other carnivores, so they're definitely have an important role in the ecosystem.
While the coyote is important in nature's scheme of things, attempts to eradicate the species have had another surprising effect.
More recent years, say the last 50 years or so, they've spread out to the Midwest and even to the East.
Studies in national parks have shown the best ways to control coyote populations.
Eradication of coyotes has been tried over and over in many different areas and it's generally been very unsuccessful, and I think it's partly because, again, they're very adaptable and they can vary their reproductive rate, so if they're, if a lot of animals are getting removed, then they produce a lot of animals. And so, generally, trying to wipe out coyotes has just not been effective.
Since killing coyotes is not a solution to the problem, we must have a better understanding of their lifestyle. Coyotes tend to live in small family groups made up mostly of parents and young pups. Some studies show that coyotes mate for life. Female coyotes are fertile for only one week during the year, thus most pups are generally born in late April or early May. It is while the pups are being raised that the coyote pack is busiest gathering food.
Coyotes become especially active during the mid-spring through the late summer when they have their litters, and of course they need to raise these litters and food requirements go way up.
Coyote litters are between six to eight pups. They will stay approximately six months with their parents, learning how to hunt for food and how to stay alive.
A coyote is a predator and a very adaptable predator that will take advantage of any food source that it can get. What they do is they actually go throughout their range, searching all the places where they found food before, and if it's dog food, then that's what they're going to be searching out. If it's fruit, they're going to be searching that out. If it's garbage, they're going to be going through their range, checking every place that they've got food before, and then investigating new places.
When the pups reach maturity, the males will leave the pack and stake out their own hunting and living territory. The females will often stay to help raise the next litter.
As a species, coyotes are amazingly successful, and there's no reason to think that that's going to change anytime soon.
So, how do we deal with coyotes? What are the do's and don'ts of keeping our homes and pets safe from this persistent pest?
If you're having trouble with animals raiding your trash cans, prevent the lid from coming up. You can always strap it down with some type of bungee cord or similar type of thing. Also, you might be able to spritz a little bit of ammonia or something like that, something to make it unpleasant, cayenne pepper, anything that you feel might cause an unpleasant smell or sensation to an animal that might be raiding your garbage.
Okay, well, here are our garbage cans as they are now, but we are going to have them enclosed here with a fence. We're going to put a fence that will have two doors that will open up, so they'll be completely enclosed.
If you have fruit trees in and around your home, collect the fruit before or as soon as it falls to the ground. If you have a home garden, keep it properly fenced, and use something stronger than chicken wire because a coyote can chew right through it. Fences properly constructed are also a good deterrent against coyotes. A local professional fencing contractor can help with the specific enclosure needs of your home.
Coyotes can scale a six to eight foot chain link fence with no problem. However, if you have an angled addition mounted at the top of the fence, of course, check with your zoning to make sure that this is a legal thing to do, but most fence companies are familiar with an angled addition that might make it more difficult for a coyote to jump over. Also, to prevent coyotes from digging under, you can extend a chain link apron in the dirt that extends out three to four feet that will prevent them from digging under.
We have wrought iron fencing around the perimeter of the property. We then have another row of fencing going into the ground so the coyotes cannot dig under the ground.
Another approach to fencing is the coyote roller, designed to stop a coyote or any wild animal from jumping over your fence. Besides good fencing, there are other deterrents that can be effective against coyotes. Randomly blinking lights or water sprinklers that are activated by sound or movement can deter wildlife.
Such things as motion sensor devices and sprinkler devices, lights that come on at unexpected times. Some people hook motion sensor devices up to a radio station or a stereo or something. So, if you get creative, you can oftentimes scare off a lot of these animals before they become a real problem. The only word of caution to that is that these animals do get used to just about everything, so if you don't change things up and change them often, you will quickly find yourself in the same position.
Right now, for trying to keep the coyotes off the property, we're putting in motion detectors on lights for the hillside, so if something comes by, the lights will go off and hopefully deter them, and probably hook it up with some kind of a bell system so when the lights go off, a bell will go off and maybe scare them off.
Never leave pet food sitting outside. Once your pets have eaten, bring eating and drinking bowls inside the house. Also, keep all pets inside the house or in an extremely secure enclosure.
What we've decided to do is to stay with the dogs when we let them out. That's the major precaution we're taking. It won't solve the coyote problem, but it'll give my pets protection.
When you are off your property, walk your pet with a leash. If your dog gives chase, the coyote will often lead the animal into a trap that can wound or kill your pet.
I recommend that maybe you carry something such as a neck horn or something similar just to protect yourself a little better. In general, when you encounter any what you consider threatening wildlife, it is always a bad idea to turn and run. That is often the trigger that causes the animal to attack when it might not otherwise. Should you see a coyote or a mountain lion or bobcat, you need to stand your ground and act threatening back, and that's not to say you need to chase the animal or run at it to scare it, but make yourself as large as possible, speak in a low, loud tone, and just make your presence known.
Also, there are some important things you should not do. Never allow your pets to roam away from the house. They can easily fall prey to a coyote. Do not leave garbage containers open. Not only will it attract coyotes, but once it becomes a source of food, they will return to it again and again regardless of how you secure it. Do not leave trash out for a number of days. Take the garbage out the night before or early that morning for pickup. The most difficult but most important thing not to do: never feed a coyote. You endanger yourself, your children, and everyone in your community. Coyotes that lose their fear of people become bold and may attack children and grownups if they are not offered the food they have been accustomed to getting from others.
Any animal that is fed by humans loses their fear of people. When they lose their fear of people, they become a threat to those individuals and other individuals around. It changes their behavior. It causes them to act in an unnatural way, viewing peoples as a way to get food rather than something to fear. In many instances, these animals have to be removed for the public safety simply because it's just too dangerous to have them there.
The best defense against coyotes is to secure your home with a proper fencing and deterrent devices. Keep your pets indoors, or when outdoors, on a leash. Secure or store all possible food, and above all, never feed a coyote. If you need more information or having a problem with coyotes, please call this number. If you need more information or having a problem with coyotes, please call this number.
Hi, I'm Zayn. Welcome to the Pacific Palace, and you're watching Channel 35. It's our city and our channel.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamarc Park. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. If I could please ask everyone to sit down and be quiet. I really enjoy doing that. Anyway, today is Wednesday, October 17th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council chambers. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and you are all welcome. Mr. Clerk, I truly believe we have a quorum. And if I am correct, sir, would you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Buscagno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weiser, Caress, Karina, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Alarcon seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Englander seconds, next. We can go through the agenda then.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, before doing so, the Office of Finance recommends that council receive and file items 3C and 3D inasmuch as the taxes have been paid.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
1 and 3, sir, 1 and 3.
And item 2 is available for us to take up at this time. Members, anybody want to speak on item 2? Seeing, hearing none. Madam Clerk on item 2, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next.
Mr. President, item 4 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, this item's before us, and we will hold this item.
Very good, sir.
Okay, that, we should have completed the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this brings us, we could either do general public comment or we could do presentations. So what I'm going to do at this point is call on Mr. Tom Labange.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everybody here at John Farrow Chambers on this wonderful day here, the 70th day of October. We're saluting Disability Mentoring Day. I need a little help. Every year, and Betty Wilson is right here, some of the commissioners are right here, we all have an opportunity, as we always do, open our doors in our offices to give an opportunity to learn about what our jobs are, what our staff jobs are, what can be done. And next to me here is Betty Wilson. And Betty, I know all the years that you worked, Kenny, all the years you worked for Mayor Bradley, all the years that you advocated for those with challenges, you made a difference because this is an institutionalized program right now. That every year, this happens. And now you have the great business community of Los Angeles right here, you too could be a part about this in the future. So Betty, on behalf of everyone here in the council, we want to salute Disability Mentoring Day, and we want to give a big shout out, and I'm going to ask, as I roll the mic real quick, for you to say a few words.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I guess I've talked so much so many years, so I don't know what I can say today, except I'm very happy that we are institutionalizing Mentoring Day and that we should make this really a model for other cities.
That's the truth. And I know some of us are in the League of Cities. I know we're good. Thank you, Betty. And real quick, give me your name.
Mecha.
Give Marine Shaw a big hand right there. Good job, brother. Jose.
Jose Romero.
All right, Jose Romero.
Christopher Flock.
Christopher Flock, give him a big hand.
Luis Mata, Commissioner.
Luis is the great commissioner. Give him a big hand. And Richard, we got anybody else from the Department of Disability right here? We thank everybody here, and Regina, good to see you, Regina. Step right here and say a few words real quick as we conclude this presentation today.
I would just like to thank Councilmember Tom Labange for his support of the Department on Disability and the community of people with disabilities. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, but you really want to give a shout out to Tony Cardenas. Tony does a lot of work with the disability community. Thank you, especially those hard of hearing. We appreciate, Richard, stand up, give us a little sign. All right, Richard, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Labange. This passed. We're going to delay for a bit as we move several people from the chambers. I do want to acknowledge that in the council chambers today, we have former State Senator, current Assembly Member Gilbert Sadio. Could we give Gilbert Sadio a round of applause? Gil Sadio. Hopefully, many of you were afforded the opportunity this past Saturday and Sunday to witness the slowest flight of the Shuttle Endeavour. I know that I was fortunate to be there with two of my grandchildren and waited for hours and hours, but when the shuttle came, their eyes got as big as car lights. It was a remarkable thing to see, and I am hopeful that young people throughout Los Angeles were inspired and maybe would dream one day of flying that shuttle themselves or building even a better one. Our next presentation is going to be by Councilmember Dennis Zine, who's going to present to us a young lady who was instrumental in ensuring that we had financial support to make this dream a reality. I had an opportunity to meet her and spend hours with her and found her to be delightful, down-to-earth, ready to roll up her sleeves and do whatever needed to be done to ensure that Los Angeles got the Space Shuttle. As I said Saturday, I don't know how many cities there are in the United States of America, but I'm sure proud that the city of Los Angeles does have one of these magnificent spacecrafts. So with that, Ms. Zine, I'm going to turn it over to you for this presentation. The floor is yours, Ms. Zine.
Thank you. I'm joined by the Councilmember for the district where this...
Where it ended.
Where it's ended, where it's going to rest, where the people are going to get to see it, California Science Center. So I'm joined by Councilmember Jan Perry, also Linda Ocean, if you'd please join us, and Jeff Rudolph, President and CEO of the California Science Center. And while we're doing this, I had the opportunity to be there when the Space Shuttle Endeavour landed at Los Angeles International Airport, and I took a number of photos. And if we could show those as I give this detailed explanation and how this all came about and how I got involved in it. Obviously, I'd seen the Space Shuttle on television. I was honored to meet Linda Ocean at that event, and it's my honor to bring you here today, Linda, with my colleagues, to pay tribute to you for what you have done to make this happen for the great people of the city of Los Angeles. This week, the entire world, actually last week, watched as the Space Shuttle Endeavour was driven slowly along our streets from LAX to its final home at the California Science Center, where Jeffrey Rudolph has not slept for a couple of days, a couple of weeks, a couple of months. The Space Shuttle Endeavour was the fifth and final NASA Space Shuttle, having first launched in 1992. If we could see the pictures, there's a number of photos that are in that, there's a number of photos in that selection. There you go. Space Shuttle having first launched in 1992 with its final launch May of 2011. It is fitting that with more than 20 organizations submitting proposals to NASA, offering to house the Endeavour, NASA ultimately selected the Samuel Ocean Air and Space Center at the California Science Center as the final home of Endeavour. It is fitting because Southern California has been the backbone of the aerospace industry for many, many decades. This region is the region that has been full of pioneers who have advanced our space exploration and worked to keep our country safe. But none of this would have been possible without the woman who is standing here with us today. Linda Ocean, don't laugh because you made it happen. Widow of Samuel Ocean has carried on the family legacy of investing in children, education, discovery, exploration, and engineering. Through the tremendous philanthropic efforts of Mr. and Mrs. Samuel Ocean and the Family Foundation, the new home for Space Shuttle Endeavour will be at the Samuel Ocean Air and Space Center at the California Science Center, which will enable hundreds and hundreds of thousands of Angelenos and visitors to this region from throughout the world to learn more about space exploration, and future generations will be inspired to pursue math, science, astronomy, education, and wonderful careers. On the final lines of the proclamation that we're going to present to Linda says the following: "In a lifetime full of accomplishments and remarkable philanthropic activities guided by the memory of her late husband Samuel, Linda Ocean and the Mr. and Mrs. Samuel Ocean Family Foundation have permanently created with it perhaps the most incredible, indelible impact on our city, region, and country through their efforts to bring Space Shuttle Endeavour to its new home for hundreds of thousands to see." Dennis P. Zine, Los Angeles City Council, future generations of Angelenos, thank you, Linda, for your tremendous contributions to our city and the United States of America. And this presentation, which we have framed, which we'll present to you, is given to you on behalf of the fine people of Los Angeles. And I met you at the event. I didn't know you before, and I saw you as you were there, and I saw you as you were being interviewed by Channel 4, and we've got those photos too, memorabilia for you. And I just thought you were such a wonderful person because your philanthropic heart was responsible for making this happen in honor of your wonderful husband. So my colleague Jan Perry is going to now rest in her district. I've invited her to say some words. Linda, these are for you, memorabilia from that wonderful day.
Ms. Zine, before you turn it over to Ms. Perry, you need to recognize that you have the Science Center's President and CEO.
We're going to have to speak.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait. You also have a very important member of the Board of Directors, and that individual should be up there with you, because I would love to see Board Member Wesson, who happens to be my wife, on television, and she serves with him. So Fabian, why don't you go over there to Mr. Zine? Go over there.
I'm sorry, First Lady, I didn't know you were here in the chambers.
Ms. Perry.
Am I going to say something? Yeah, yeah, if you want to, yeah. So, thank you very much. I'm really happy to be able to stand next to you today and to tell you, I want to tell you what your contribution did, what your donation did. I think that as I stood for hours on Crenshaw Boulevard, Martin Luther King, and we waited patiently, and then we were so excited. No, it's a good thing. I wanted to see, you know, what was going on further south, so we went south down Crenshaw Boulevard. And what you created was a sea of humanity. What you created was a chain reaction. There were all kinds of people walking in the street, holding their children's hands, sitting on the sidewalks, and you could hear them say, "Here it comes," or "There it is," or just standing in awe, overwhelmed by the sheer magnitude of it, the fact that it was in South Los Angeles and it was coming to its home, which is in South Los Angeles, for everybody to share and everybody to partake. There were people from all walks of life, all ethnicities, people walking towards the Endeavour, not away from it, but towards it, just to witness this moment in our city's history. And I want to say to you, it was a special moment for everybody who had the opportunity to see it. And you know that conversation you have about one drop of water, one stone in the pond, and you just never know how many people it's going to touch. So I can tell you firsthand, you touched thousands upon thousands of people that day, and it'll continue to resonate for many, many generations to come. So thank you for your generosity.
And Linda's generosity, in addition to Griffith Park and Samuel Ocean, we have the Observatory, the contribution to this, if you don't mind if I mention that? The financial contribution, don't mention that? Just say it's a lot of money.
It's a little.
It was a little, it was a lot. Without that, we wouldn't have made it happen. But Jeff, do you want to say some words, and then we'll have Linda talk?
Well, I would just start by saying thank you to all of the members of the council, particularly those whose districts we went through and who supported us all along in planning that and executing this incredible few days. Councilmember Rosenthal, Parks, Wesson, and Jan Perry, and all of the council, the mayor, the city. This was truly a huge effort by so many people, but it was well worth it. We have inspired millions of people worldwide to pursue their interest in science, math, and space, and we will continue to do that when we open on October 30th. But I wanted, since today is about Linda Ocean, I want to just take a minute to say that this is an incredible woman who really did, before many others saw, see the potential. When I first went to her and said, "We have been a warden Endeavour, and we need a lot of support to make this happen for the city." First she told me it was crazy, but then she said, "Okay." And thought about it a little more, and we got together, and just a fantastic person who cares deeply about exactly what we're about, which is children, the future, science, exploration, and has been a great pleasure for me to work with Linda. And she's an ordinary, regular person too, which is really great. So she was out in t-shirts, walking the route most of the weekend with us, and I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Good morning. I know it touched millions and millions, but I know two very special people that waited six, seven hours for it, and that were my two grandchildren, two and four, who woke up at 7:00 o'clock that morning. Nan and Poppy's taking us to see the shuttle today. Let's go. So thank you, Linda, for all your support. Thank Jeff and his staff, who did a phenomenal, phenomenal job, weeks of working from sun up to sunset to make this happen, and it happened, so thank you.
And I had the pleasure with my son Christopher, it was a father-son day that we were able to enjoy there at LAX when it landed, and it was that effort, bringing families together, bringing Los Angeles together, which was a rare occasion, we couldn't make that happen. But now the microphone is yours, because we're here to honor you, to show our appreciation, our love for you, for what you did for this great city of the angels, that are going to memory, that'll live forever and ever and ever. They talk about once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This was once in an opportunity for me and Angelino that I'd never thought would ever happen. So I know in honor of Sam, you're here because of your love for him, and he's watching from above, because with his guidance, we made this happen. Linda.
Let's give her a round of applause. And Ms. Ocean, if you could wait one minute, we have a couple of members of the council would like to say a few words, beginning with Mr. Tom Labange.
Linda Ocean, I love you for all you have done with the Sam Ocean Foundation. I was able to work with Sam Ocean in the 1980s, late 70s, 80s, on redevelopment, Wilshire Boulevard with J.H. Steiner. They at one time were a collaborative partner, but Sam Ocean's legacy goes from high in the heavens through Griffith Park to the planetarium. planetarium, the Sam Ocean Planetarium, all the way down Vermont Avenue, left at 39th Street, right into the California Science Center. And what a great place to be. I just want to salute you, Linda, for all you've done in the, for many, many areas, but especially the connection between, sorry, Betsy, between the Observatory and the California Science Center, between Griffith Park and Expo Park. And Ms. Wesson, thank you, as you reminded everybody, and it was an orchestration of the movers, the electricians, the DWP, the street lighting, other cities, LA Transportation Department, transportation officers, DOT, LAPD, LA Fire. What an orchestration, as better as any symphony played at the Hollywood Bowl. My only regret is, Mr. Wesson, we couldn't sneak 'em up La Brea to come down Hollywood Boulevard by the Chinese Theater. Congratulations, Linda Ocean.
Mr. Labange, I think I might have to introduce a motion that will restrict you from using your arms, because you almost cost us a worker's comp case, and the city of Los Angeles is trying to save every nickel and dime that we can. Mitchell Englander.
Well, after that, I'm actually gonna file a stress claim. But I just, you know, thinking about the space race and the race to put first man on the moon. And just not too long ago, we brought in the folks from JPL and everything that they did with putting the Mars Rover up in space. And we just had another space jump and broke a world's record recently, where somebody jumped 24 miles, I think, plummeted to Earth, which is crazy. And that's nothing. We brought, and what you did, to bring the shuttle through the streets of LA, that, quite frankly, and getting through the bureaucracy here to get that done, that far exceeds what anybody has done to put anything in space or jump from space. And so my hat's off to you. This is really a true, wonderful, amazing collaboration that, because of your leadership and working in your vision, and certainly all the support behind this effort is really tremendous, that generations upon generations will watch this forever. And to be part of it and seeing this happen in our lifetime on our streets, and we'll be able to go visit this with our children, our grandchildren, is truly remarkable. So God bless you, God bless America, and thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
Ms. Ocean, the floor belongs to you.
Well, I don't know what to say. I did not know that I was going to speak today, and I'm floored by all of this. I can't thank everybody. There are no words for all of this, but I do want to tell you, this is my husband, and this is all about my husband. It's all about everything he lived and everything he dreamed, and this is his legacy. And to see everybody out there, the hundreds of thousands, million, I think we had over a million people, not one incident, everybody just calm and loving every minute, and American flags going, and it was the most incredible event, I think, ever in Los Angeles. It's about the children, it's about the future of our country, it's about the future of our world. And without Jeff, I have to tell you, without Jeff, this would have never happened. It's because of Jeff that I was brought to the Science Center. And I just can't thank you enough, on behalf of my husband, on behalf of the foundation that he made all of this possible. Just thank you for this tremendous support, for this honor, and for the privilege. And I have to tell you, Dennis, it's not about money, it's all about the children. The money is irrelevant. It's about the children, and it's about our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Give her a round of applause.
These are for you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna go in the back and do some photos.
Okay.
Be careful with Mr. Zine, though. I'll let you know in advance. Okay, Mr. Clerk, at this point in time, I want to go out of order and take up a very important item, which is item number four. So I will allow or ask that Gary and your team of folk come to the center table. And Gary, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Tobin, before we get started, I need to get some direction from you. We have several cards on item four. We can do them before, or we can do them after. So I don't know, you may want to go through your report.
Yes, we'll do that.
And then we'll, at the end, we'll call those up. I just wanted to get your preference. So the floor is yours, Mr. Tobin. And again, thank all of you for coming, and I want to thank you, you know, Ms. Hathaway, everybody in advance, for all of the hard work and hours that you put into this report. I think it's a very important document that the city can use as a template as we move forward. So welcome to your City Hall.
Thank you, Council President Wesson. And I'd like to add our applause and congratulations and appreciation to the disability rights groups that were here this morning, so important. And our congratulations and thank you to Linda Ocean and the Science Center. The visibility and the generosity involved in that project is significant. And I hope that all of you as council members know that Sam Ocean was a developer, a businessman, and who continues to give back to this community through his wife, Linda, to make this a better place to live. But it was only because he had the opportunity to be in business here in Los Angeles. Well, on behalf of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce and our nearly 300 people who joined us here this morning for our annual access City Hall.
In fact, give yourselves a round of applause, all of you, for coming out, taking time from your busy schedule to be here today.
We really express our sincere appreciation for having us here in council to discuss what is on everyone's mind, and you heard a lot about it last night in the debate, and that's jobs and the economy. One out of every eight citizens represented by this body are unemployed, and a like number are underemployed. Our social services agencies feel it, so do our city tax coffers. There's no higher priority today. We applaud your support for recent projects like Bradley West at LAX, the Hollywood Community Plan, Farmer's Field, the upcoming USC specific plan. And we applaud your willingness to take a hard look at the negative impact the city's grocery receipts tax has on business creation and job retention. But the LA Area Chamber of Commerce is more than an organization that promotes business-friendly policies. The chamber is at the forefront of some of the most important social issues facing our region today, including education reform, workforce development, and homelessness. We want to dethrone Los Angeles as the homeless capital of the nation through our Home for Good collaborative with United Way of Los Angeles. We'd like to share off, start off today by sharing with you, it's a piece of paper that says our priorities. We'd like to talk about those eight priorities. And then following that, Dustin Schrader with Beacon Economics will walk through the report, the economic performance report that you have at your individual desks. Let me introduce the people with us here this morning. First of all, Karen Hathaway on my left, the Chair of the Board of the Chamber's Board of Directors, President and Managing Partner of the Los Angeles Athletic Club, and one of the city's oldest organizations, and a founding member of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce in 1888. Sitting next to Karen, sitting next to me, rather, is the newest member of the Chamber staff, Ruben Gonzalez, who's Vice President of Public Policy and Political Affairs at the Chamber. Many of you may remember Ruben from his days here at City Hall with former Controller Laura Chick and Councilwoman Ruth Galaner. And then Dustin Schrader, who is with us from Beacon Economics, and he will talk about our report. Let me begin by handing it off to Karen, and she'll start with our priorities.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members. As Chair of the Chamber's Board of Directors, I'm very pleased to be here with my colleagues to discuss the priorities that we are recommending to you for the coming year. So first and foremost, make business growth and job creation the number-one priority. Proactively and aggressively, extend the welcome mat to new and existing businesses that wish to invest in your district, as well as the other districts of our great city. It's not just up to the mayor and his business team. Each of you, council members, can make a difference to bring business here and to keep business here. Construction will be a major key to our economic recovery, and we suggest that you focus resources on city departments that can help business get started and help business expand. By doing that, the city will facilitate job creation and support new revenue streams for our entire community. Examples are Building and Safety, the Planning Department, the Economic Development Department, and the Office of Finance. Next, we ask that you implement a plan to phase out the gross receipts tax. Now, you are all well aware, the city of Los Angeles has the highest business tax of any city in LA County, and it's one of the highest in our nation. This encourages businesses to leave Los Angeles, not just for other states, but across the street, to go to Burbank, Glendale, City of Industry. The city-appointed Business Tax Advisory Committee, after years of public hearings and academic studies, has recommended a three-stage plan to simplify the tax structure and lower the gross receipts tax, with eventual elimination after 15 years. Eliminating the gross receipts tax will create thousands of jobs and generate more revenue through property, sales, and utility taxes than the current gross receipts tax currently generates. So the city Jobs and Business Development Committee, under Councilman Garcetti's leadership, has approved the first phase of this plan, and we strongly urge the full city council to do the same. Now I'll turn the mic back over to Gary.
Our next item on the agenda is LAX modernization, a subject you've talked about on many occasions. As you know, LAX is a $60 billion annual economic engine for our region and supports tens of thousands of local jobs. The chamber applauds the recent progress to modernize the South Airfield, expand Tom Bradley Terminal, and update the other outdated terminals for a better passenger experience. But there's certainly a pressing need to do more, as all of you who fly and use LAX know, including metro services to the airport, a consolidated rental car facility, and the reconfiguration of the two northern runways for greater passenger safety and to accommodate the new generation of larger, cleaner, and quieter aircraft. You're familiar with this draft EIR that was released this summer. Comments have just concluded. We encourage you, the city council, to support whatever recommendations the Board of Airport Commissioners make when they determine the most appropriate alternative to ensure that LAX once again becomes a world-class airport. It was last summer that Councilman Reyes and Councilman Buscagno had a discussion here about competing with the Panama Canal, because all of you know the danger that lies ahead when the canal has finished its widening project in 2014. You know that the port of LA is responsible for hundreds of thousands of jobs and millions of dollars of tax revenue. We urge the council to aggressively support projects like the Burlington Northern Santa Fez Southern California International Gateway, which is currently now undergoing public review with a draft EIR. By supporting projects like this project and many others, Plains All-American, so many others at the port, we can meet the challenge of the Panama Canal expansion. We can modernize and green the port at the same time. Now I'm going to turn this over to Ruben Gonzalez, our VP of Public Policy and Political Affairs.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. Our next agenda priority is to continue to reform the city's pension system. There is no greater challenge facing the city of Los Angeles than the growing impact of pension obligations on city services and the overall fiscal health of the city. You've heard the numbers before, but they bear restating. From 2002 to 2011, pension costs rose 22% annually. Today, approximately 20% of the general fund receipts go to pension obligations. If we don't do more to change the system, that number will rise to 25% of the general fund by 2017. The city leadership, this council, has taken great strides to deal with this problem, including the recently discussed addition of a new pension tier for new civilian employees. But we simply must do more. The job is not complete. Our next agenda priority is that we utilize private-public partnerships to enhance city assets and reduce the budget deficit. The city's current fiscal condition has created the need to implement long- and short-term operational changes to address the structural deficit. Some city assets are best managed through private-public partnerships, as is done and is a best practice in every major US city, including our own. The Los Angeles County Museum Vart and the Hollywood Bowl are excellent examples of how community assets can be managed in partnership with private or nonprofit entities. Learning from these successes will enable our city assets, such as the Los Angeles Zoo and the Convention Center, to live up to their full potential. Together, these two public-private partnership opportunities alone have the ability to save the city $34 to $97 million over five years, while being more competitive and providing an even higher quality of service. And now, Gary, we'll take a few moments to talk about our priorities in education and workforce development, and our work to end chronic and veteran homelessness in Los Angeles.
You all know that the success of our city, long-term, depends on the success of our schools and the quality of our workforce. The city's involvement with the LA Compact initiated by the LA Chamber is extremely important. We urge you to support partnerships with United, with Los Angeles Unified School District to better integrate city services, such as school safety, and the city's gang reduction zones, to create a nurturing and safe learning environment for our youth. Also, to partner with LAUSD and the Community College District to provide training services to low-income and underserved communities. And to continue, as you have in the past, to invest in higher L.A.'s youth to ensure our region's low-income, underserved youth have access to critical new early work experiences. Home for Good is an initiative that the LA Area Chamber and United Way released in 2010, an active, an action plan to end chronic and veteran homelessness in Los Angeles by Since its launch, Home for Good has inspired a cooperative alliance between federal and local officials, a landmark shift of county resources, and the establishment of a funder's collaborative to leverage public and private funds for homeless housing for maximum results. A majority of you already signed on to Home for Good to support the creation of permanent supportive housing and align city services with that effort, and we encourage those of you who have not to do so. Your Housing Department has been very supportive. We really appreciate the collaborative efforts between the city and the county on Home for Good. Now, I'd like to turn this over to Dustin, who will talk about the Beacon Economics report that you have in front of you. This is the third year that you have seen this report. We emailed a copy to each of your districts. You have a hard copy in front of you, and we'll be delighted to visit with you about you or your staff at a later date, if you'd like to do so personally. Dustin, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much to the chamber and the offices of the city of LA for helping to put the project together. I'm not sure, there it is. There we go. Thank you. The purpose of the project, city leaders have information on demographic and income statistics in the new districts, but not statistics in the new districts, but not as much for economic characteristics like employment and wages, construction, and business and consumer activity. And the goal of the study and of the report is to provide a first glance at the new economic makeup of each district based on the variables described above. So how we collected the data, building permit data we gathered from the City of Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety, gross receipts and sales tax data comes from the City of L.A. Office of Finance, and employment and wage data was gathered through the California Employment Development Department. All data in this study, current and historical, is based on a new district map. The data can be a little noisy at times because of geocoding and EDD confidentiality. And with the City of L.A.'s help, we can get a complete record of sub-district-level data by sector. Starting with employment at citywide, city employment is at 0.4% from 2010 to 2011. It's a little bit slower growth than the County of L.A. at 0.6%, and the state overall at 0.8%. But what we're seeing is that it was an especially good year for some of the city's biggest sectors. On top, healthcare, the largest sector, is up almost 4%. Professional scientific and technical services, which is a high-wage sector, was up over 7%. And L.A.'s traditionally large manufacturing sector, on the other hand, is down about 6.2% in the city, compared to being up about 1% in the state overall. At the district level, we're seeing that downtown in Eagle Rock, the 14th District, and the UCLA Century City Mid-City West District, the 5th District, contain about a third of all total payroll employment citywide. Employment concentration is much smaller in southwest L.A., District 8, and northeast San Fernando Valley, in District 7. On the far-right column, you can't really see, but overall, the type of jobs that are being added to the city varies quite widely from district to district. Among annual worker wages, annual worker wages are up in the City of L.A., but we're seeing sectors with the highest wages overall increasing the most year over year. Finance and insurance is up almost 8%, while management is up over 15%. Some of the lower-wage sectors are seeing year-over-year declines. Manufacturing is down about 2%, and other services, which includes repair and maintenance and laundry, is down about 14%. At the district level, it's the districts with the highest overall job totals that are seeing some of the highest annual wage gains year over year. UCLA Century City is up close to $80,000 per year, while downtown in Eagle Rock is up over $70,000. Southwest L.A. and Mid-City and Wilshire Center, the 10th District, where total employment is much lower, tend to have lower annual worker wages. Looking at construction in the city, the trend is moving upward, but it's moving slowly. For the first six months of 2012, we're on pace to exceed 2011 totals. We're at about $1.2 billion versus about $2.2 billion for 2011. Non-residential building permit values for the year-to-date are about 40% of 2011 values. On the other hand, residential building permits are doing very well, at over 70% of 2011 At the district level, the districts with the highest number of jobs, again, tend to have the highest overall building permit values. So once again, we're seeing UCLA and Century City already with about $200 million in total building permit values for the year-to-date. That's already 25% higher than all of last year, and it's coming predominantly from multifamily building permits, so apartments. The 11th District, which is west L.A., LAX and coastal neighborhoods, are also seeing a great deal of residential planned construction as well, and the 11th District is on track for a year about equal to 2010. Mid-City and Wilshire Center, which only has about 60,000 total payroll jobs in the city, has quite a lot of non-residential construction, at $68 million in 2012, which is a good sign because that includes commercial development as well. On the other hand, there's room for growth in the non-residential sector in the west San Fernando Valley in the 3rd District and near the Port of L.A. in the 15th District. So on the business side, gross receipts tax revenues are rising fast in some of the biggest sectors. Professional scientific and technical services is about 20% of overall gross receipts, and it's up over 9%. Finance and insurance is up over 12% as well. In a promising sign, retail trade is also up over 6%. District-wide, we see the growth is strongest in districts with more high-revenue businesses. So on the west side, the 5th and 11th Districts, and in downtown as well, the 14th District, growth is at 3% or higher. Growth tends to be slowest in districts with more lower-revenue businesses. So in districts with more retail trade and wholesale trade, like southwest L.A. and the USC area, growth is actually down year over year. On the consumer side, the outlook is very positive. Sales taxes are up nearly 10% for the 2012 fiscal year, which is almost double 2011's growth rate. District by district, consumer spending at the district level shows even more promising numbers. West L.A., the 11th District, which already had the highest total sales tax receipts for the year 2011, saw an increase of nearly 20% in the 2012 fiscal year. Growth has been strong in virtually every district, and it's above 8% in districts with smaller overall consumer spending, like the USC area, Mid-City, and southwest Los Angeles. And it's a great sign for the continued recovery of citywide, as even small districts are seeing big gains in overall consumer spending. So we see that overall employment is increasing in the city, and districts with a higher concentration of higher-wage jobs are seeing the biggest increases so far. Annual worker wages are up, especially in high-wage sectors, but wages are varying widely across districts. Construction remains slow, but residential construction has been leading the way so far this year. Gross receipts are increasing rapidly in districts with more jobs in professional scientific and technical services, and overall sales tax growth has been very strong in districts with higher levels of consumer spending. But overall, growth has been strong across the board, which is very promising news for the city's economic growth moving forward. And thank you very much. And district by district data can be found in the economic report, and feel free to contact any of us for more information.
Councilmember Reyes, we have concluded our presentation. Thank you for your time. Now, do you have, members of the council, have any questions?
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, and we have a spool. Speaker Q, we have Councilman Perry, followed by Councilman Buscaino. But before we do that, Councilman Perry, if I may, I think Tom Bunch has a quick introduction.
This has been a great presentation, which I'll speak to later, but the Marshall Plan sends its finest from all over Europe here. David Roberts from USC is leading the way. Please welcome our Marshall Plan special interns here on this day for the fellowship of the Marshall Plan. Thank you, David.
Is the mic on?
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate this report. It's a very useful tool, and it's an analysis without editorial comment, which is very, very helpful. It's very objective. And I was struck by looking at employment and firm statistics and looking at the former district layout for District 9, and the number of jobs was well over 200,000 in 2010. And under the new district layout, District 9 now accounts for 71,000-plus jobs. And then you do the companion piece to that as District 9 became District 14, whereas District 14 went from 89,000-plus jobs in 2010, and the new District 14 now has 310,000-plus jobs. What I'd love to see, and when you do this for the next year, is not only the same analysis because it shows the impacts of redistricting, but it doesn't tell the subtext. And what the subtext is, boundaries mean something when you're leveraging private and public funds. Because oftentimes, when you're leveraging tax increment or mellow ruse or purchase of air rights, they're done within a district or they're done within a certain radius of a project. But oftentimes, they're combined within a district. Quimby Funds is an example of that. So I would ask you, so you can truly examine the depth and breadth of, you know, what a district has and what it no longer has and what it may have in the future, if you could add that part into your analysis to show the capacity for a district to be able to leverage for future growth and expansion. I think it's an important tool, and I think that people need to understand that, that, you know, simple actions go far deeper, the implications are far more significant, and can resonate for decades to come in terms of whether a community or an area or neighborhood can grow or decline. And as a city, you know, we're on the cusp of great growth, quite possibly. Your highlight today of the need for pension reform is critical, and the conversation, the debate you had about gross receipts is critical. And all I urge you to do is to not back down, be mindful of the fact that when we remove one source of revenue, we have to be responsible and replace it with another, and that you help us in this critical discourse by participating vigorously in the vetting of this and offering your ideas in a very aggressive way so that we can come out at the other end of the pipeline with a balanced, well-crafted solution to all of these situations, all of these problems. But I appreciate the analysis, and I hope that you'll keep that in mind. Mellow ruse, Quimby, we don't have tax increment right now, but we did up until very recently, and tax increment and leveraging that was transformative, and the loss of that has been enormous. Thank you.
Mr. Joe Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you and Mr. Garcetti for bringing the L.A. Chamber here. What an amazing and incredible, comprehensive report. Thank you so much. It's great to see some of your members here as well to support you. One question, then, I'm going to dive into some comments about the Port of Los Angeles, how much of an economic asset it is in the city, in the region, in the country. But regarding some of the employment and economic numbers, do you have specific data, specific numbers to each of the community, the district? For example, I'd like to know specifically how Watts fares within the 15th District.
We can get that. The data was all geocoded, based on locations and businesses, so we can grab the data. I don't have it in front of me, but yeah.
I appreciate that. If you can get that, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I know you mentioned the importance of the SKIG project and the port, and I thank you for your support. Regarding the port, we need to ensure that the port remains competitive. That's no big secret. It's critical to the health and vitality of our local, regional, and national economies, and jobs throughout the city. And each and every one of our council districts depend on the movement of cargo through our ports. And in ensuring that the port expands, we need to make sure it grows green as well. I often tell the story of my brother-in-law, Donnie, who years ago came home after a shift working the docks full at SOOT. He had SOOT on his clothes. Today, he does not have SOOT on his clothes, which is a great example of the mayor's initiative, the Clean Air Action Plan, and the Port of Los Angeles dedication to ensuring we have emission reductions throughout the Wilmington to San Pedro areas. In addition, the widening of the Panama Canal, as I partnered with Mr. Reyes with the Beat the Canal presentation, we're in the race, we are in a race with the East Coast. That's no big secret. This City Council needs to partner with the business community, each and every one of you, to ensure that we're getting a fair share of federal dollars to keep us competitive. And as you heard, recent news that the Port of Los Angeles just announced eight developers who responded to the request for qualifications to redevelop the entire Port of Call Village. That is so exciting for us. As we know, the L.A. waterfront is such a critical component in bringing people to the port to visit, spend money, and redevelop it with commercial retail. And we're really proud to champion that and work with the port to make it happen. And I want to thank the Chamber also for getting the information out to some of the prospective developers. So with that, I want to thank the Chamber for being here. I look forward to continuing to work with each and every one of you and improving the quality of life in the city and helping make the city more business-friendly. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to the entire Chamber membership and to the Chamber leadership and staff, again, for what is always one of my favorite days here in Los Angeles. It's always been great to see your agenda. As I was joking with Gary, it's grown this year to eight points, which is a good thing. You need to be more and more expansive, and it's been really wonderful, I think, every year, four out of five things we've been able to deliver in that year, if not sometimes five out of five, whether it was the Office of Economic Analysis, whether it's been pass reductions in the gross receipts tax, workforce training initiatives, et cetera. This is great, and I want to highlight a couple of things and then ask you a question. One of the things that's particularly refreshing about this is that it doesn't just continue the same old tired conversation around here about making our budget balance here through cuts and taxes. Cuts and taxes is not a route to success. It has to be growing the economy. We know that fundamentally. We see that in a city that's lost 165,000 jobs over the last 30 years and while we've added 800,000 people. And thank you for highlighting, obviously, the work on phasing out of gross receipts tax. The Daily News called this "the biggest step the region's largest city could take," and the Business Tax Advisory Committee said, and even in the re-analyses by two other folks, anywhere between 100 and 130,000 of those lost jobs would come back to the City of Los Angeles. And as we know, jobs mean receipts. Jobs mean money for services. And ultimately, jobs mean more self-sustaining families that have less of a strain on our public finances. So really changing the conversation just from, what are we going to cut this year? What taxes might we put on the ballot? To actually looking at the creation of jobs, which will fill in those revenues and those receipts, I think we've seen that in a lot of these statistics. Secondly, I want to thank you for your focus on homelessness. It is, you know, very enlightened, progressive, and, just bottom-line, smart thing to be doing. Again, talking about the strain that not solving homelessness puts on our public finances when we have those emergency room visits, when we have the benefits that people take because they're not getting off the street permanently, it is time for us to act on this, and I really appreciate that. And then lastly, as always, a shout-out to my friend David Rattray and all the folks doing workforce development work, because this is, I think, the most enlightened chamber in the country on, in that issue as well. One last area, though, that isn't on here, and maybe it's not in a bullet point like this, but a ninth that certainly is a focus of mine and one that I'd be curious to know what the Chamber is thinking, is our burgeoning tech sector here in Los Angeles. I had dinner with 25 tech entrepreneurs and folks who have a bunch of incubators. One guy who founded the largest video game company, who's now doing this and looking at starting 500 new companies in Los Angeles, estimating in five years to have 10,000 to 15,000 new tech employees here, Venice, Santa Monica, and the L.A. region. How we can better strengthen our university partnerships to take the number-one university system in the country and take those ideas from the classroom to the boardroom. Caltech has more patents than any university in the world. The UC system is second. We've got one of those, and USC is doing great. They each have partnerships, but I think the Chamber can play, and government can play a more catalytic role of getting those into new startups. Fast-tracking entrepreneurialism in the city, which we don't have a culture of, and identifying land. I'll close on this because my time's up, but the guy who is doing these 500 companies, he's done 30 of them already, but he's like, okay, I need a place to go now. Where do I go in the city? I don't need the city to help me out starting these businesses, but I need to know where I'm going to put them, and if I can't put them here, I'm going someplace else. So what are your thoughts on that? Because I really see that as part of our future economy and a critically important part of the rebound of this entire region.
Thank you very much for your question. This year, the Chamber has actually added a new focus. We are actively involved in pursuing and encouraging emerging commerce and emerging companies. We see that as the future of our economy, and we've partnered very closely with the Clean Tech Incubator here in downtown L.A. Additionally, we now have started and gotten approval for a Small Business Development Center, which will be housed at the Chamber. So we're very much in tune with the need to encourage small business and emerging commerce in particular. So thank you for your comment. It is a priority for our Chamber.
Councilmember, you might be interested to know that we'll have a presentation from that group of 25 entrepreneurs that you just talked about at our board meeting in three weeks. And so we're very excited about the opportunities to not only grow those kind of jobs, but take advantage of our university system here. I would venture to say that we take less advantage of our universities here in Los Angeles than most cities do. Because we're so big, we take them for granted, but they spawn ideas and businesses every day, and we have to make it easy for those businesses to start and grow in our community. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the Chamber for their work. Throughout the years, as Chair of Land Use and Management, I have seen how we could complement and work with each other when you put into light the planning police powers of this municipal corporation. And what I appreciate about the work that you've done is that you show how in different variables and charts how our building permit values are increasing, and yet we still have challenges with our sales tax receipts. And given the objectivity of it, I appreciate that analysis. But I would hope that we could start looking at, in ways, the ways in which this city is looking to the future. So we've had discussions here on the floor about building up the skill set within the city to look at our underused land, our dormant properties, and outdated zones around our city to look at our underused land, our dormant properties, and outdated zones around our industrial corridors. But we're still looking at railroad spurs, old yards that are stuck in technology that is frozen in time back to the 1940s and 50s. Yet in these same pockets, we have thousands and thousands of people moving in and are already living there. Granted, some of those communities are at 40% poverty. Then there are other communities and populations that are moving in. Downtown, thanks to Councilman Perry and the hard work of the city, we saw over 50,000 people move into downtown in the last six years. So when you see that kind of energy, we need to reassess how we perform as a city and its land use. So when I look at the new zones that are being discussed now in Planning Commission, we're looking at urban village, urban technology, greenways. We are talking about mixed income and mixed uses. I would hope that in the future, we can look at those types of initiatives and see how it can impact the categories analysis that you currently have for us. When I look at the river corridor, we have a river improvement overlay zone. It does change the notion of converting our backyard into our front yard, which means new jobs, points of relief, parkways, greenways, ways in which we capture the water. But more importantly, I believe it speaks to affordable housing for our workforce. Much that scares away business is the fact that housing is so expensive in Los Angeles. The workforce is commuting six, eight, between four to six, even eight hours, people going all over the high deserts. That's what they can afford. So in working in your partnership with, partnership with you, how we stimulate those economic development issues, although it's under the umbrella of housing, it dramatically affects how businesses feel comfortable moving in for the workforce. These are based on facts, not on ideologies. So I appreciate your hard work and look forward to other approaches in your analysis and speaking to a more inviting city as we take this proactive approach.
Well, another item that we could have added here, and there are many more, would be support for the community planning that you did in Hollywood and you need to do and are doing across the city, because it addresses some of those issues. We also talked yesterday with, I know a consultant is working on the city's economic development possibilities at the direction of the CAO. And I told them that one of the most important things would be put in place, a structure to look at the land in the city, especially city-owned property, and identify an overall plan for that property.
Just last point, I look forward to working with you and your staff, perhaps the body that makes up the L.A. Chamber, so they can understand what the river corridor means. It's not just about parks. It's about jobs. It's about new environments for new investment. It's about new land use scenarios, and it's about creating relief, but more importantly, make it desirable to be in this great city.
Thank you.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all the good work that was done here, and I think this analysis will be a helpful tool for us in the future and all these proposals. The only thing I want to ask about is the section on the gross receipts tax. I mean intuitively, I think having such a high gross receipts tax is a bad idea. Years ago, when I was on the West Hollywood City Council, I fought the implementation of our first business license tax, because I thought having none would be a great tool to attract business, and I still do. The only question is, you look at this chart, and we're up there with Santa Monica, and we're talking about phasing it out so we can attract more jobs. But Santa Monica, despite that, is an out-of-control job-creating machine. In fact, traffic on the west side is at absolute gridlock because of all the people now that go to all those jobs in Santa Monica and come back from them in the evening. So how has Santa Monica managed to not be impacted by their high business license taxes and gross receipts taxes and create as many jobs as anyone could ever imagine? Why is that not affecting them?
The gross receipts tax, highest category in Santa Monica, affects far fewer businesses than the category in Los Angeles. In fact, just a few businesses, industry groups. But we'll get you that full report, because that's a very good question.
And even though that's true, I believe all of their gross receipts taxes are higher than most of the other cities that we're comparing them to, even though I think L.A.'s overall, you know, it's more consistently high and a worse circumstance for business. But it is a fair question.
Yes, it is.
It doesn't seem to have slowed their business creation down at all. So what are they doing that offsets that high tax rate that allows them to keep creating businesses at such a high rate?
We will do an assessment on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, Englander.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you very much for putting the information together. It's extremely helpful, particularly in my district where we've got the largest leftover, if you will, M-zone properties, light industrial manufacturing in the Northridge-Chatsworth corridor. And we've put together a very aggressive business outreach team. We're actually going door-to-door. We're calling these businesses and trying to work with them to access capital, explain the enterprise zone that we were able to get with the overlay in Silmar, as well as in my district, that new enterprise zone. There's only 42 of those, and help highlight some of the advantages and streamline the process to help businesses grow and stay there in L.A. Unfortunately, with the warehouse space and the light industrial manufacturing that we do have left there, there's just in about four or five years ago, you'd drive around the district and you'd see big banners on all the buildings that said "Help Wanted" and "Machinist Wanted." And now the banner companies are still in business, but they have new banners up that say for lease or for sale and vacant property. And so we're trying aggressively to market that area as well. And looking at some of the numbers here that you've put together, one of my questions, and I know you've mentioned some of the mapping and what you've done, in looking at the trends, did you consider on the 2011 numbers, were they attributed to if the council districts were as if they are today? Or were they based on historical information?
All historical information is based on the new district map. We mapped everything accordingly.
And updated that statistical information. And then what would you, what would be some of your recommendations in, besides elimination of the business tax, which I fully support, and streamlining the permit process and having that true one-stop shop, and making sure that departments are working aggressively, not only with the large development projects, which they've done a much better job at, but the small monpaws and the startups? And that's really what we're struggling with. What are some of the other recommendations that you would suggest outside of the ones we're well aware of to streamline some of those processes? Was that part of the report as well? Or is that something that's coming under separate cover?
That is not part of this report, because we were trying to make this just an assessment of the data. But we would be happy to sit down with you and talk about that. The step that you're making in terms on calling on businesses is significant. There are very few times that anyone tells a business in Los Angeles, "We love you," unless they're asking for money.
That's true.
So the fact that you're calling from your office on businesses, you're probably hearing from those businesses, "No one has ever called on us before."
We hear that often, in fact. We hear it from industries, and we've brought industries together as well to do the same thing with roundtables and teaching them how to be either more efficient or energy-efficient or access to capital or how to... We just had a trade export out in CD 12 where we brought the Port of Los Angeles to the manufacturers and said, "The 'Made in L.A.' label is strong, and here's how you can use embassies and ambassadors, and here's how you can learn how to export your goods that you're manufacturing here," since we have a large base of that. So I'd welcome working with the chamber.
We'll set up that time.
To see if we can expand on some of those efforts as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that said, Gary, I'm going to call.
Thank you.
The general public comment cards. Someone asked Mr. Tom Williams to come, Dr. Tom Williams to come forward, Arnold Sacks, Rudy Garza to please come forward, and is there coming forward? Gary, Gary, I want to acknowledge my neighbor two doors away, Ernie. Ernie, don't think I didn't see you. It's my neighbor. He's a good man. Take good care of him. So if we could get Dr. Tom Williams, you're first. Arnold Sacks and Rudy Garza. Yes, sir.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council and Chairperson for the Business and Economic Development Committee. Did we see the same presentation? Because the presentation slides were unintelligible from the distance. So parts of access. Number one, for the port. Can't you keep him from...
Doctor, if I could, I would.
The port. The port needs to convert to railroad on dock. Railroad off dock, near dock, far dock, won't work. You got to compete with the Panama Canal. So having trucking, and if you look at CD 15 statistics, hey, they got a lot of voters down there. So what do we do? But I don't come from CD 15. I come from CD 14. And we have a problem. It's called, I don't know of anyone in El Serrano that has a wage of over $60,000 a year, so it's distorted. The statistics, when you look at the gerrymandered 2012 districts, includes all sorts of things, which distorts the statistics of the entire report. Oh, by the way, CD 1 lost 60% of the total job losses in the city. CD 14 only lost 10% of the total job losses. But that was a distortion that they corrected in the footnotes regarding CD 1. So CD 14 needs to be reevaluated, and we'll be checking about how it goes next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garza, I see that you're there. Why don't you come up? And I'm, this is a last call for Mr. Sacks, Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. I'm here representing the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, an organization that was started over 35 years ago, right here down the hall in the City of Los Angeles Engineering Department. We've expanded throughout the nation, and we have student chapters in all the major universities. In fact, in the Los Angeles area, we have 11 student chapters in engineering. So we represent the technology community, and we're very focused on the STEM program, which is science, engineering, technology, and mathematics. So a number of our members have their own companies. And in presidential debates, they talk a lot about supporting small business. But what we need to do is support high-tech small business, because that's where we're going to compete in the global economy with high technology. Everybody's aware that raising the technological level of community of a city raises the economic level. So when we're talking about supporting small business, we're talking about supporting very unique, high-tech businesses that are able to take technology from the major universities, Jet Propulsion Lab, all the engineers that worked in aerospace have that technology. But we need to have a very unique support-like business. Where do we set up our manufacturing facilities in the City of Los Angeles that have, they have the facilities we need for high-tech products like solar panels, battery storage devices, and a number of other high, green technology products that need special attention, much different than starting up a donut shop or a car wash shop. So my point is, we need to have, beyond the incubator program, move into what's called the commercialization part of development of these small businesses, and that's having very unique technology services. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks. Arnold Sacks. Okay, I called him. He didn't come. Lou Baglietto, Lupita Conejo, and Mervyn Evans. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Honorable Counsel. My name is Lou Baglietto, and I think many of you know me as a advocate for a variety of port businesses down in the Port of Los Angeles through my business at Betterfield Communications. However, today, I'm not here on behalf of my port clients. I'm actually here on behalf of the LAX modernization projects. I have been privileged in my life to serve as the president of the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce. And for, many of you may not know that not only do we have many businesses that support the port industry, but many businesses in Harbor Gateway also work, do work at LAX. And the airport is as equally important to us as the port is. Now, I think the chamber, Gary made some great comments about the importance of modernization at LAX. It is vitally important that we move on and continue the modernization projects, that we move through and create a 21st century infrastructure at La Wa. It is vitally important to the future of Los Angeles. Two weeks ago, I was privileged to bring Willie Brown to these chambers. We were meeting with many of you on behalf of a client. And I was also very lucky to be able to have lunch with him afterwards, and we discussed his term as mayor of San Francisco. And he said, having come through LAX that morning, that he was embarrassed for the City of L.A. about the condition of the terminals. And he said that when he was mayor of San Francisco, the first, and what he still believes the most important project that he did was the modernization of San Francisco International and bringing BART all the way down to the airport. Those are two projects, the modernization, the continued modernization of our terminals, the relocation of the runway, and also to bring through the Green Line extension and also the People Connect at LAX. Are projects that we need to greenlight, and we need to get done. I thank you for your time, and good luck with that.
Thank you. And unfortunately, we had a big day, but the mayor had invited me to go to lunch with you guys, and I was unable to do that because we were doing the Lord's work here in the council. Mr. Evans, followed by Dominic Rubacaba.
Mr. Wesson, I want your permission to launch the Wesson for Governor Committee. All right, because you're the best. Let me share with you, I want to thank the members of the chamber for their dynamic package and the outstanding, that's outstanding and exciting, presentation that they made. But I'm concerned about a different issue. I'm concerned that the west side and continued growth on the west side, continued growth at the airport, will reduce the quality of life in Westchester, Venice, Marina Del Rey, South Los Angeles. I would hope that we would look more to a regional plan. Number two, more jobs, that's not the answer. More quality, high-paying, high-tech, long-term manufacturing, long-term quality jobs, that's what we need. More housing, not necessarily so. More affordable housing, senior housing. I want to say thank you again to the chamber for the outstanding report they prepared. It really was dynamic. I invite everyone to visit mervynevins.com. And once again, can I start that 2014 committee?
No, I'm going to start it with your name, Merv. You might have already run for governor. Anyway, Dom, come on forward, then Lupita, and then?
Steven Oizobo.
Steven Oizobo? I know I butchered that. Hey, my friend.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. Nice to see you again. I'm here on behalf of the chamber. I've been asked to reinforce an important item on our advocacy agenda, and that's the issue of gross receipts tax. You've spoken, each of you, a number of times on points of it. We're here, I'm here, to congratulate you on a couple of steps you've already taken. Number one, the continuation of your tax holiday for small businesses. I believe you've extended that for three years. I think that's a very wise decision. I think that's going to bear fruit, and I think that's going to be a move in the right direction. Number two, another step that you've taken is the elimination of the gross receipts tax with regards to your auto dealers. That also, I think, is a very good step. But we're on a long journey. We have a way to go, and we have a lot more work to do. We're going to need your leadership. We're going to need your help to make sure that the tax is eliminated in its totality. Your task force is giving you a report with a roadmap that the chamber supports. We're looking for your help in implementing that. There's some of us that think that that's a little long. 15 years is a long period of time. But we realize, as I believe Councilwoman Perry mentioned, that when you eliminate a tax, you have to have an offset, and it has to be a balanced approach. We understand that. We will work with you on that. This is an important matter for the chamber. We're looking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Lupita, followed by Steven, followed by, I believe it's Dean Leavenworth. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Lupita Sanchez-Cornejo with AT&amp;T, and I am here with the L.A. Chamber as part of... Lupita Sanchez-Cornejo with AT&amp;T, and I am here with the LA Chamber as part of, as part of our Access Day. And, I know that you all have our one pager with eight points that are important to the business community, and I would like to touch on the priority of job creation in the city. As a representative of a company, a telecommunications company, an entertainment company, it is important to have good, quality jobs in our city, and so I want to, once again, just stress this point, and thank you for the work that you do, but there's still a lot of work to be done and to continue this. Thank you.
No, thank you. So, can we get Steven, California Trade and Investment? Come on forward, Steven, if you're here, and it's Dean Leavenworth, or maybe Deanne? It looks like, it could have been, it could have been Deanne, but apparently, not.
Not, nope, it's Dean. As the co-chair of the Chamber's Educational Workforce Development Council, my comment is fairly brief and fairly direct, and that is, thank you. We really appreciate the partnership that the City Council and the city as a whole commit to and work with us on the WIB, on other workforce developments, on other education campaigns, programs, the compact and the like. I guess the only ask we have of you is stay the course, be strong, know that we are there to work with you, that we support what you do, we want to stand with you in Washington, DC, when we try to get Southern, or summer youth programs, trying to get more workforce development money. Know that the businesses in the Chamber in Los Angeles appreciate what you do, and we will have your back as you go and try and get more workforce development for here in the community. So, thank you very much.
No, thank you. You've always had an E at the end?
Yeah.
I didn't remember that. Okay, well, hey, it's your name, I trust you, Dean. Okay, Jose Gonzalez, still looking for Steven, Alex Pugh, Noel Weiss. The first one that gets there, just identify yourself and go.
Uh, yes, my name is Jose Gonzalez. I just wanted to share with you some, a real, a little bit of history real quick. This is my anniversary of doing a presentation before the City Council. Well, the first time was in 1972, when I was working with, was then the Model Cities Program, where we were trying to build up the Northeast and South Central Los Angeles. Today, I'm the President and CEO of a company called APX Management. We do management consulting with small businesses, a lot of it is also related to healthcare. And, part of what I've done in the last two years is we've come up with two projects that I wanted to share with you. Number one, is we have a company called Encuentro Technologies, and it's a group of engineers and people in the energy field that we've come together because we need to industrialize energy. We talk about everybody becoming an engineer, but it didn't, the automobiles didn't happen because of all the people that designed them, it's all the people that constructed them, that brought them together. And, we need to bring that kind of workforce into our communities as well, because what's happening in Santa Monica, that's where all the engineers are. But, if you look at Boyle Heights, if you look at El Serrano, if you look at Lincoln Heights, South Central, there are no engineering firms, and there's also none of the manufacturing or assembly that needs to be done to be able to compete with China and all those other places. So, it's a country, if our priority is jobs, and our priority is energy, then let's bring it to our community and give people the ability to do those kinds of jobs. So, we're asking the city to help our group, Encuentro Technologies, sit down and look for some locations. We've already been doing the development, we need some places where we can draw those people that are out of work, that are homeless, to be able to come in and do work that isn't going to require them to get a degree in UCLA.
Thank you.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Alex Pugh, Noel Weiss. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. I'm here with the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce today, and I'm also a Los Angeles City resident, CD-14, I live in downtown. When I stand on the top of my building, I can see this wonderful uninterrupted view all the way down to the Port of Los Angeles, I can even see the cranes off in the distance. I'm an optimist, I think it's great, the partnership that, that the City Council and the City of Los Angeles has with the Chamber. And, I also think that, even though I live in downtown, the entire, the entire city is really where I live. And, so, to bring it all together, I'm as concerned about what's happening at the port as I am in my own neighborhood. And, I really want to encourage all of you to really think hard about, what are the things that we can do as Los Angelinos to ensure the economic development of our entire city? How can we support the pieces of infrastructure that will help us succeed in the future? And, quite frankly, how can we beat the Panama Canal? We've got some great projects on the table that are in front of you, and I encourage you to think about how you can move those forward, things like the SKIG, how to improve the port itself, and how to bring that back home. So, thank you very much for your partnership, and I think we'll look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, sir. Noel, Noel Weiss.
Thank you. Kudos to the Chamber of Commerce. I think the, going forward, and I'm particularly concerned about the reference to Rancho Plain's All-American situation. I think it's, I think there's an opportunity cost involved, it's very unrealistic to expect anybody to develop any property within a few miles of that area, because you're talking about 25 million gallons of butane, and there's no insurance to basically cover it. And, nobody's going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on a project when it has that kind of exposure and uninsured situation. I ask the Chamber of Commerce to partner with the community to come up with constructive, practical, realistic, fair solutions to this issue. And, one of them is, if the City Council through Mr. Biscayeno would introduce a motion to basically expand the boundaries of the port, to include the Rancho property, then at that point, the power of eminent domain can be used as leverage in the Pier 400 project, which Rancho has a direct interest in, because that's a $500 million project. And, I think an open debate and discussion about that would benefit not just the Chamber and the city, but everybody concerned, and it would give rise to a practical solution to this problem. In addition, what we're talking about is, I think another partnership needs to be between the Chamber of Commerce and the labor unions. We have 600,000 unfilled manufacturing jobs in this city, or maybe beyond. Where's the vocational training? I think the Chamber of Commerce and the unions can get together to basically come up with a practical viable alternative solution there. This City Council, in the last 10 years, has not come up with an infrastructure policy, they have not had a housing policy, they have not had an affordable housing policy, and they haven't had a transportation policy. I would urge the Chamber of Commerce to be more aggressive in pushing this City Council to basically come up with the debate and the discussion, because out of that debate and discussion, and out of those power of ideas can come realistic, practical solutions. These people, a lot of them, don't want to make the decisions, but they have to be forced to do so. So, going forward, I appreciate again, what the, this start. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Okay, that, on this item, on item number four, that was the last public comment card. Mr. Zine, did you want to say something before?
Just briefly, Mr. President, thank you, and I apologize, I was with Ms. Ocean for a period of time, that lady who was so generous with the space shuttle endeavor. Looking at District 3, and you know I'm a pro-business type of person, we've got some great opportunities to build, enhance the business community. We have Westfield, that is attempting in District 3 to build a Costco and adjoining shopping complex to increase the jobs, increase the sales tax, it's basically vacant land. It's now being held up in litigation. Courts have now intervened because someone filed a lawsuit. What is the Chamber doing, what can the Chamber do to assist in a project that is needed for the community, needed for the environment, needed for the opportunity? How can you assist us in trying to move these along to help boost the economy, to help boost the region? And, the West San Fernando Valley, as we see the numbers, does better than some areas, but when you look at the, the opportunity for sales tax, it's down, the building permits, and we're ready to go with a massive project that we can put a lot of people to work, and then people to work and bring in sales tax on what we call infill. So, if you could respond to that, and I don't know if this is all parts of the city, but I know it's affecting my district.
Well, you're raising an issue that is of the utmost concern to everyone in the community, should be, and, and I don't know in particular if that project is being stopped because of environmental litigation, is that the case?
Well, there, I think they've tried to throw everything in to, to block it, to delay it, and one of the problems is Costco says, we have a deadline, if we don't get it, and Costco obviously is a major retailer that employs a lot of people and a lot of sales tax, but I think they've thrown a lot of issues in to try and block it, and it's going through litigation. So, while it's in litigation, it's static, nothing's happening.
Well, we see that...
They've done the EIR, I mean, they've done all the, all the research and all the projects that need to be done, all the, the process.
We see that kind of stoppage, time and time again, and it's often a result of an abuse of the state environmental protection rules. And, one of the things that the Chamber is doing very earnestly and aggressively in Sacramento is to try to break through that by encouraging some reform and modernization of our environmental protection laws that would not abrogate the original intent, but that would free up these kinds of projects from this hostage litigation that we see. So, that's on the big picture, and as far as the community goes, we do want to assist in bringing these businesses to opening.
There's a handful that object, and the rest of the community, hundreds and thousands of people have signed, yes, we want it, we want it, we want it, we want to bring it in, when's it going to happen? So, and the way the process is, and Mr. Reyes, our Plumb Chair knows it, it doesn't take a lot to block a project, to file an action. And, unfortunately, these people spend thousands of dollars doing the EIRs and doing the permits, et cetera, and a few dollars, and I don't know exactly what it costs, but that can block a project worth millions upon millions of dollars. That's one of the issues that needs to be addressed, because we are holding up, not only in my district, I'm sure other areas, very valuable assets to the city and very valuable job opportunities, construction and the follow-up.
And, that's not to say that the city projects themselves are often held up for the same reason, and it's, it's an abuse of democracy, in effect. Well, the city can join with us, and I think that many of you have, in our efforts in Sacramento to try to break through this logjam, and it's essential for the recovery of our economy in our state and in our city.
Because I think the abuse is...
Mr. Zine, check your time.
I think the abuse is blatant. Gary, did you want to respond?
Yeah. We'll get in touch with your office, we're putting together a case list of projects that get delayed for just reasons like this, because I'm co-chairing a statewide CEQA reform task force that's looking at issues just like this.
Great.
So, if we could get that data from you on this project...
Be happy to help you. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes.
It's really fast. With the Rose and Cycle Specific Plan, we're already putting in place the EIR, the city is sponsoring it, we did all the work for the past four years, it will go in place, create four new zones, it's one approach to deal with these kinds of issues raised by Councilman Zine. I'll follow up with you that later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for that clarification, and again, to Ms. Hathaway, Mr. Tobin, and all of the people at the Chamber, thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for coming before this body today. We will receive and file your report. Again, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and members of the council.
Okay, now, we're going to move to, to item one, Arnold Sax, Merv Evans, Noel Weiss on item one, please come forward. Merv, hustle, you're closest. Please come forward.
Mr. Wesson, every time we build a school in this city, we disrupt something. We disrupt some homeowners, we disrupt something, we change property value. Having a high school, an elementary school, whatever it is, next to your residential property is a nightmare. I would hope that we encourage our school district to look at partnering with our existing community colleges, state colleges, as well as universities. Many young people would benefit by the opportunity of taking 12th grade classes, segments, on a college campus and start learning the skills needed to go to college. But, building schools and building schools and building schools disrupts neighborhoods. And, I hope you change your mind about running for governor.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Sax is not here, Noel, Noel Weiss, please come forward.
Mr., I, must have been a mistake, Mr. President, I just want, I, my card should be general comment, my, my other card.
Okay, then that's my mistake, thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there are no speakers on the queue where it relates to this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now, I'm going to switch and do a quick, I want to do two general public comment cards, Dr. Tom Williams and Rafael Peña, and Arnold Sax.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member. Measure J, or actually, we're starting to call it Measure Joke for Northeast LA. Why? Because if you look at it, it's nothing more than an MTA slash fund to the year 2069. If you look at the details of it, you'll find that they can do almost anything with the amount of money that they have, eh, roughly $41 billion. They can switch it around just by majority vote. So, although it requires 67% to get it in place, once it's in place, it becomes a slush fund. Some of the problems, uh, there's, oh, it's not 41 billion, there's $13 billion that they don't know where it's going to come from, but it can come from federal, state, local, and private sources. Hmm, another problem. Oh, by the way, the $785 million, only millions, for the 710 North Extension, quotes tunnel, can be used only in the San Gabriel Valley if they decide to change it. That is, El Serrano, who has suffered for 30 some odd years with Caltrans, doesn't get any of it. So, $785 billion, million dollars will go to South Pasadena, El Hamra, El Monte, but nothing for the City of Los Angeles, although we have suffered and we represent almost a half of the total project area. So, Measure J is bad. Then, the other one is, please become mayor donors.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So, Arnold Sax is in here, Rafael Peña, followed by Merv Evans. Yes, sir.
Yeah, morning, councilmembers. My name is Rafael Peña. Every day, millions take an hour to get where they're going. You know, flying a week, we take five minutes, no traffic jams, no waiting for lights to change, not turning left and right. They'll follow rules, they'll be safe, easy to fly. What I would like, since they won't see me, is for the city to talk to small jet engine manufacturers, like GE Honda, Pratt &amp; Whitney. They can assemble a flying car in one hour, they get all the parts. Jet engines come with pump and ignition built in. If you add two small jet engines and a fuel tank to a chair, you'll lift off. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Evans.
I want to quickly remind all our good neighbors, if you're an absentee voter, vote by mail, you should be voting now. Please visit MervynEvansVoterGuide.info. Let me ask the council one very simple question. We've got 25,000 to 40,000 people who are in Skid Row who are homeless, we've got 15% of our children in San Pedro being adversely affected by asthma and other things directly related to port particulate activity. We got an unbearable condition with planes coming over South LA, Manchester Corridor, just, just too much. I would hope that this council would not look at every issue on a fiscal basis or an economic basis. I would hope that you seriously start looking at quality of life issues, changing the quality of life issues that are associated. Once again, MervynEvans.com, please visit MervynEvansVoterGuide.info. If you're an absentee voter, you should be voting now. And, Paul Coretts, Paul Coretts, thank you. Take care.
Okay, thank you, Mervyn. Okay, now, we're going to move back to, I believe it's item three. So, on item 3... So on item three, I call Arnold Sacks, Matt Dowd, and Merv, even though I love Merv, he's not out of time yet. You're not, Merv, you got it ironed out perfectly. So Arnold Sacks, Matt Dowd, Merv Evans.
Well, Arnold's not here. All right, three things. One, I do not like publishing the names of businesses that are having problems with the Business Department, the Department of Financial Affairs. I would hope that you would change this because if you're in business and then all of a sudden the whole city's told that you've got liens or you've got a problem or there's something that is of derogatory nature and they call off the name of your business, it might hurt your business even more. I would hope that when there are fines and liens that assess against a business with a business title, that the names of those businesses are not publicly broadcast, which causes them more harm. And once again, Mr. Wesson, you're the very best. If leadership, management, integrity had one name, it would be Herb Wesson.
Thank you, thank you. See, Noel, I got a friend. Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Point of personal privilege, do we have a quote on the number of times that speakers compliment the president?
He has free range. Mervin has free range, executive order of the president. Okay, Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yes, thank you. And of course, you get free rein when you're saying something nice about a council member that's way off topic that we'd get kicked out for. Someone left some pair of glasses over here, they're probably going to come looking for it. Thank you. Let me get back on the topic of this one. Paul Krikorian, this is going to be useful, get some of this money in because the attorneys are running away with the general fund. And I'm so happy that you're actually going after these people. $119,000, another one, $65,000. Because Paul Krikorian's the one who's going to have to explain to the firemen and the police of this city and all the pension holders why the city doesn't have money to pay and they're shutting down all the fire stations. And another reason is they're running away with the litigation. So anybody here who doesn't support Carmen Trutanich for reelection ought to get over there and shut him down on my litigation because they're running away with the money.
He's not talking about these liens.
Of course. Matt Dowd gets the decorum.
Come on, come on, Matt.
Yeah. Just finish your statement. Okay, all right. Herb Wesson, you're doing a fantastic job. Why don't you run for governor?
No, just stay on the subject, Matthew.
You're doing a great job collecting all these unpaid taxes.
All right, on that item, no more speakers, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll go back to general public comment. Matt Dowd, Henry Marine, Henry Marine, and I think it's Oliver Garcia, please come forward.
Good, now I get to talk about anything I want. So first of all, the Space Shuttle, okay, what a great spectacle, but really it represents billions and billions of dollars. It didn't do anything for any homeless veterans or affordable housing. It's just billions of dollars burnt up in rocket fuel and all these things they waste money on. So I'm glad it was a great spectacle and it's going to be lovely over there at USC. Well done, congratulations. Secondly, I'm so glad you shut down the valley for the remote location. I'm so tired of those same women just on and on about nothing. They got no real purpose. They just sit there and go, oh, Eric Garcetti, you look so handsome. And they get away with all these things, got nothing to do with the city, what Eric Garcetti looks like. I happen to disagree. Hey, but that's just, I'm so glad you shut them down. I mean, you know, aren't you happy except Eric doesn't get his endorsement every day? All right, let's get to the next thing. Paul Krikorian. It's going to be a million dollars at least already, the attorney, I don't know if you've seen how they're running away with the $700 an hour attorneys fighting for this public comment thing, but I've already proved you can say anything you want here and it goes out on TV and all you can do is go, oh, you have to be kicked out. Who cares? I just come right back. So it's a million dollars, the judge already gave an injunction against the Venice Beach ordinance that you created, and that's the two-year anniversary of that's coming up, and the attorneys are running up hundreds of thousands of dollars. So good luck explaining that to the firemen and the police and the libraries and all the people. And now Bill Rosendahl, unfortunately, every time I see him reminds me of Joe Paterno because this whole injunction in Venice thing is such a massive federal crime against the people, but he's sitting there for two years and does nothing. It's just like Joe Paterno sees those crimes and he does nothing, and now he's got cancer and I'm sorry about that, but when I see him, it just reminds me of that.
Thank you, Henry, followed by Oliver Garcia.
Morning.
Morning.
My DD 214 shows how honorable people honorably account for the time of the service of government employees. However, my Hackland Cola check stubs show that the people serving this body and the Hackla Board failed and refused to do so. The honorable members of the Hackla Board made one mistake. They allowed the CEO and to use the money of others at will. Hackland Cola ammo use show every percent withheld from the pay of others and me for up to one year, six months. But then they got greedy, they agreed to continue doing it. And then now we got permanent positions. And now I'm being misrepresented as a hiring hall employee or self-employed contractor serving the city. But my W2s show everybody, who I was employed by. So got to get rid of this Adam Neve syndrome and trying to cover up what you took from the trust and try to cover up with leaves. I talked to Mr. Trutanich this morning, he says he can't do nothing about this unless the city council gives him direction to do so. As you know, he's responsible for the public employee retirement system and the employment money is paid to city employees. So now we got a conflict of interest. What he don't do for you in the first place, he didn't do for the lasers in the second place, he's going to be guilty of in the third place as breach of duty.
Thank you, thank you. Oliver Garcia, followed by Pat Barrett.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Oliver Garcia. I am a teacher in the South Area in District Eight, District Nine, and District 15. And what I'm here, I'm here to inform the council on a project that I'm working with my students that, it's a greenhouse gas reporting program that the students and I have developed where we estimate the greenhouse gas emissions for the school, then we use the fuel economy.gov website to estimate the greenhouse gas emissions, then we create a carpooling program for the faculty to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. So we're able to quantify that. It's a program that's easily done with available resources that are online, is completely free to implement, and that's why I'm carrying out this project on a voluntary basis with Bethune Middle School on Broadway and 69th Street. We're hoping, the plan is to create carpool and vanpool programs that will support the express lanes that are coming up. And so this is a project that I would, I'm going to propose to the MTA as well, hoping that they will provide internships for the students. And I would like to receive your partnership, the entire city council, because this is a project that I feel should be, would be beneficial for the students, for the environment, and for the MTA, and for the city as a congestion mitigation program. Okay, so that's it. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. Ms. Barrett? Hey, Noel, if I could get you to wait for one second. Noel, have you already spoken on general public?
No.
Or was it just based on the misfiled card? So you're the last speaker after Ms. Barrett? Okay.
Hello, my name's Pat Barrett and I'm a resident in downtown L.A. and I moved here for a couple of things. Number one is I see great opportunity here. Number two is I see property value going up and my property has gone up and I see opportunities for business. But at the same time, I see many faults which need to be corrected to help business prosper. One of the things is, and I think this is a major fault of our city, and it can bring a lot of revenue to the city as well as hopefully reduce the crime and help the police department as well so that they have less to do, and that would be to make it mandatory charge for the metro system, the blue line, the red line. How many times have I wrote it? How many times have I paid it? And how many times have I seen people not paying? The only times that they will pay is when there is a cop there. It's 1,000% increase. That needs to be done and that would increase the revenue. The other thing is to reduce roadblocks for businesses that come in. How many times have I sat here on 11th and Hope? They were supposed to put a glass building and it was refused for six parking spaces for guests. And then when, and they had financing that, and then when it was approved two years later, there was no financing. Those type of things, fixing the sidewalks near 11th and, between 11th and Olympic, fixing that sidewalk that is cracked, those are small things. The other thing is to put trash cans, as Mr. Evans had said, the sanitary problems in Skid Row is awful. I see a homeless person taking a trash bin down the street to put trash. There is hordes of trash and the woman at the women's shelter complained about it. 11th, no, Wilshire and Alvarado needs garbage, more garbage cans. Our place is unsanitary and we need to give more business incentives like Pittsburgh has for businesses. 40% of films have gone there like Batman and a lot of other places. So I'm hoping that you reduce the roadblocks for businesses. One of your top employers here is not redoing their union contract right now and it's taken longer than usual because, I'm sure because of the roadblocks. So please reduce it, please have business, and please let us be number one.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Noel Weiss.
Thank you, council, Mr. President. I want to report to this council on the Rancho Palisverdes Council meeting last night concerning the Rancho facility. The, I think it's, really, the really, the issue that this council has to deal with is who assumes the risk of loss in the event of an accident involving 25 million gallons of butane. Mr. Busciano wants development, the community wants development, the city wants development, everybody wants development. How do we get there? Number one, Mr. Busciano introduces a motion to subpoena under Charter Section 217 Rancho's insurance policy. Now, it should be noted that Rancho last night, after it was grilled for 20, 25 minutes, something that's never happened before this body, but Rancho volunteered to provide the city of Rancho Palisverdes with its insurance policy. So either Mr. Trutanich never asked for it or we're just basically, this council's allowing itself to be kind of pushed around a little bit by Rancho. I don't think that's appropriate. Rancho has its paid mouthpieces, it's up to the you people, Mr. Busciano in particular, to represent the interests of the broader body politic. We need to have that insurance information and we need to have it, if Rancho, if the council of Rancho Palisverdes, please, Mr. President, please, I think it's appropriate that public council, public committee listen to Mr. Cardenas's comments. He's not listening, he needs to listen. Now, number two, what we need is a risk management control ordinance of the type by Contra Costa County. Again, Mr. President, for the record, I point out, Contra Costa County, I'm going to give this to Mr. Busciano because I don't even think that he knows that it exists, but I want him to read it and I think the council needs to debate it. Third, we have the redrawing of the geographic line so that we can leverage that Pier 400 negotiations. Number four, the city attorney, by order of the council, needs to resign from representing the proprietary agencies because there's a conflict of interest. The harbor department has liability to the city, the city has potential liability to the harbor, the city attorney can't be on both sides. There's more, but unfortunately, again, for the record, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Busciano.
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Labange, if you could make your way to the president's chair, I'm going to ask you to take us home. Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Clerk, is there any more business before this committee?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
And we're going to switch to Mr. Labange now.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Are there any announcements today? Any announcements? Councilman of the 50th District, Mr. Busciano.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. As you remember colleagues, last week we adjourned in memory of John Greenwood. I want to announce his memorial service in celebration of his incredible 67 years to be held this Saturday, October 20th at 3:00 p.m. Service will take place at the San Pedro High School Annex John M. and Muriel Olgin Campus in the multipurpose room at 3:00 this Saturday. There will be a viewing on Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at McNerney's Mortuary, 570 West 5th Street. Again, that'll be this Thursday, the viewing for John Greenwood at McNerney's Mortuary from 6:00 to 8:00. That's at 570 West 5th Street. Donation to the organization in which John has been affiliated since the 60s, any donation can go to Coral Southern California. The family would greatly appreciate that. Flowers can be sent to McNerney's Mortuary. And this comes from Karen and Liz Greenwood. Karen and Liz, just know that our thoughts and prayers remain with you and the family. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless the memory of John Greenwood. Mr. Englander.
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow evening, we're going to have a gathering with Department of Toxics and Substance Control, DTSC, on the status of the Chatsworth Park South that has been closed from lead poisoning and with a remedial and action plan that'll be presented to the public. It's going to be at Mason Park at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mitch. Announcements, Mr. Zain?
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Tomorrow at 11:00, ribbon cutting ceremony, Lanark Park, the first synthetic turf for the San Fernando Valley District Three, that'll be taking place tomorrow, 11:00 at Lanark Park, Topanga, just south of Roscoe. The public's invited to that ribbon cutting. Lanark Park tomorrow, 11:00.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the public to a meeting of the City of L.A.'s Commission on Community and Family Services and the Affordable Housing Commission to discuss priorities for next year's consolidated plan. It will be for the South L.A. area at the Constituent Service Center, 8475 South Vermont, L.A. It's Thursday, October 18th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements before I call adjourning motions? Mr. Tobin? Mr. Tobin, we want to thank you again for the chamber and all their work and look forward to working with you the coming weeks and months ahead on the agenda. Any adjourning motions, member? Ms. Perry?
Today, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mary.
Please all rise for adjourning motions. Thank you.
Mary Louise Roberts. In 1944, Mary moved to Los Angeles where she attended George Washington Carver Junior High School, and in 1948, she graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School. After high school and Metropolitan Business School, she worked as a legal secretary in the office of Curtis C. Taylor. In 1953, she met the man who would later become her loving husband, Johnny Roberts, Sr., and went to work as a clerk typist at the Los Angeles County Registrar of Voters. She was a devoted member of Second Baptist Church under the leadership of Reverend Dr. J. Raymond Henderson. Among her many interests, she was a voracious reader who went through the Los Angeles Times from front to back every single morning. She was preceded in death by her husband, mother, aunts, and uncles. She leaves to cherish her memory, her son Johnny Roberts, Jr., her niece Dolores, nephew Eric, a grand niece Lenisha, close friend Selena King, Cora Watson, Marilyn Porter, May Nelson, and Ezra Lee Tobin, and a host of cousins and friends. She will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Alakon?
Yes, council members, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Maurice Weiner. Maurice Mori Weiner passed away on September 30th, 2012, at the age of 82. Mori was Mayor Bradley's first chief of staff in 1973, and he was essential in developing the coalition building strategy that elected the first African American to a city where the voting population was still overwhelmingly white. The grassroots coalition building strategy that Mori pioneered is still the most important political strategy in Los Angeles politics today. Mori was a leader in Californians for Liberal Representation, an organization which influenced significant political and human rights issues from 1962 until the mid-'70s. He was an activist in the California Democratic Council and was twice elected president of the Southern California Americans for Democratic Action. When he first came to Los Angeles, he volunteered as a precinct coordinator for Ed Roybal's congressional campaign. He was impressed with Congressman Roybal, the first Latino to serve on the Los Angeles City Council, because he was the only member to refuse to sign a loyalty oath. Mori respected this principle as he had quit his own job at the New York Post Office for the same reason. principle, as he had quit his own job at the New York Post Office for the same reason. Mori first met Tom Bradley while they were both supporting Royball, and Bradley subsequently asked Mori to help him run his campaign for city council. Mori became a key link to a wide range of liberal and progressive organizations and pioneered a grassroots coalition campaign based on volunteer activists. When Tom Bradley was elected mayor, Mori served as deputy mayor, helping to reform and transform City Hall by running an office that was so open and organized that the most original, that most of the original staff from 1973 stayed in the mayor's office for 20 years. Beyond his service, within the governing of the city of Los Angeles, Mori leveraged his political wisdom and philanthropic spirit as an administrator of Tarzana Treatment Center, one of Los Angeles' largest behavioral healthcare organizations. In retirement, he continued to be very active and held various leadership positions within the American Association of Retired Persons, AARP, and the Tom Bradley Legacy Foundation at UCLA. Mori is survived by his brother Herbert Weiner, his sister Elaine Reynosa, and his nephew Dean. Mori will be remembered as a great progressive, a devoted advocate for civil rights, gender equity, and the rights of working women and men. He will be truly missed. May he rest in peace.
Do I add, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much. I was at Mr. Weiner's memorial service at Mount Sinai on Sunday and spoke there briefly. Had Abbie Farrell and Rick Tuttle and a whole bunch of folks who told some amazing stories. Mori was a friend and a supporter, somebody who really was a great mentor to me for years and recently as well. Somebody who told me the kind of incredible stories of what it was like. I think we take for granted the narrative of what happened in the city with the election of Tom Bradley, but in 1963, when there wasn't even a single African American on the council yet, what it was like for him as a liberal Jew to be working closely with an African American police officer to run for city council. And he was a smart guy. When people wanted to talk to Tom, they'd talk to Mori, and they would have access. There's folks who told stories of what it was like when he was a chief of staff and, you know, the way that he empowered those and made sure that Tom Bradley's legacy of really looking at, making sure that there were Latinos, that there were African Americans, that there were women in the office, way before even a lot of the women's rights and civil rights struggle had finished a lot of the work that they had done in the late '60s. He was a part of that. And one thing that always stayed with people is, after he left politics, the work that he did and how he stayed in touch with people, and his kind of trademark expression whenever he said goodbye to folks, it was always, "Be well." And speaker after speaker came up, and they said they could still hear Mori saying, "Be well." But this city is well because of him, and we know up there right now, Mori, we wish you all the best and be well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That's all members on that. Seeing no others, this meeting's adjourned.